September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to in session and to order. As required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the chair prior to the start of this meeting. See none. We were not in executive session, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Joe, I'm going to have you start with public comment if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to you and the members and everyone here assembled and everyone at home. As you can see in the agenda, we have two announcements regarding topics that we've been talking about for quite some time. The first is the Community Engagement Forum that we talked about at your meeting on September fourth, where you met jointly with the Board of Water and Wastewater Commissioners. So representatives from Town of Harwich, GHD Incorporated, our engineer, and Robert B. Hour Incorporated, our construction company, will be available on Tuesday, October first, at six thirty P. M. in the multipurpose room at the community center. And again, this is our Community Engagement Forum for Phase Three wastewater construction, which, as you know, is referred to as the East Harwich Sewer Extension. And so, as promised, we're going to have that follow-up with all the representatives. We'll be talking about calendars and schedules and other things of note. And I would also use this opportunity to say that, following that, we will resume our board updates on where the projects are going, once we get into that. So that's the Community Engagement Forum on Phase Three wastewater. And the second one is related to, as the board knows, I sent an email last week. Your colleague, the chair, Julie Kavanaugh, should have received in her email a letter from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. I believe Mr. Pikarski might have been copied on that, I think, as clerk of the board. And I did get some of the emails that they sent. So we now have notice of the thirty-day review process. As I wrote to the board in the email, this process, as you know, is governed by the state regulations on low and moderate income housing, which is seven sixty C. M. R. So we are now under the thirty-day clock. And as I wrote in the email, I'd like to go through, Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, the schedule of activities that relate to the thirty-day review and build off of that.
That would be great. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. So I shared the thirty-day letter and the five-part application files. The five-part actually is a bit of a misnomer. We had received three emails from the Commonwealth, one that has the thirty-day letter, one that has a file that they refer to as Part One and Part Two. There is a Part Five, but we did not receive Parts Three and Four. I and staff have been reaching out to the state to see if we have that full application. Regardless, we assume we're under the thirty-day requirement, so that's why I'm doing this public announcement this evening. And I think the most relevant announcement this evening is that we have scheduled for you, the select board, to have a public input and discussion session on Monday, September thirtieth, whereby staff and I will be submitting reports through your agenda packet, and then you would be seeking public input. And all of that information will be collated into a letter that can be sent back to the state in response to the project eligibility letter. The project eligibility, as we've talked about before, is Pine Oaks Village Housing, Phase Four. They're asking Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities to help them seek funding as the subsidizing agency. So the first effort for the Town of Harwich is to weigh in on the review of that project eligibility letter. It is by no means the full process. In fact, it is probably the beginning of the beginning and is something that will be separate and distinct from the zoning board process, as they review the forty-B, Chapter Forty-B comprehensive permit that Pine Oaks Village will have to seek through the zoning board. And of course, a lot of the information we gather may inform the town's official or other responses of the Z. B. A. But we're now under the process. I wrote in my email to you folks that I've shared it with department heads and asked them to share that with as many boards, committees, and commissions as they believe are relevant for these matters. And we're going to follow up with a blast to all committees tomorrow. Tomorrow is a department head meeting where we're going to spend a significant amount of time on reviewing the determining factors that we think the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities will be looking at per the C. M. R. and will be looking to provide content. And again, for us, all of that is leading to your board meeting scheduled for September thirtieth, so that you'll have an opportunity in October seventh to look at a final draft of a letter before it gets transmitted to the state.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And before you go to the public, I'm going to add a public comment here. With our new website going live several months ago, a few unintended things happened. So if you're interested in getting notices and announcements from the town, either for your favorite committees or your favorite agendas or such, please go back to the website and re-sign up, because it did drop that portion when everything migrated over. And for those of you who have never done that, if you are interested in getting announcements and updates from our town's website, please do the same. If you have any questions, you can certainly email me at my select board email. Thank you very much. And Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've talked to some people who have signed up, and the question I have is this kind of a binary on-off switch, because the ones that I know who have are getting everything, all agendas, all meeting minutes, everything, for every town entity.
Really?
Yeah.
They're very well informed. Unfortunately, I don't have the answer to that.
It's like a giant game of Where's Waldo, if you're only looking for one thing.
So maybe, Joe, we can look into that, and then we can talk about it shortly.
Sure. Follow up the director of I.T.
But I do know that if you were getting alerts and notifications, and now you're not getting them, just please go back and re-sign up. Anybody from the public for public comment? She beat you to it. You've got to be quick. When Lynn's in the room, you've got to be quick. Hi, Lynn.
Hi, Lynn Zalazak, Harwich Historical Society. Just wanted to pass along that the annual newsletter will be coming out shortly. It'll probably be coming out towards the end of the week. And I just wanted to pass along that the main article of this one is CBS foreign correspondent Seth Dome. He's twelfth generation Harwich. So look for it, read it.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the public? Sure. Thank you.
Hi, Teresa Johnson, North Harwich. I had sent in an email, it was kind of later today, to the chairperson, Julie and Joe, but it was kind of late, so I just figured I'd actually read it, just so everybody's aware of what I sent in. Not sure if any of it's going to be discussed tonight, wasn't sure what was going to be talked about as far as Pine Oaks Village. Dear Madam Chair and Mr. Powers, attached, please find the application that Pine Oaks Village four filed with the Massachusetts Housing Department Development on July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, which I referenced at a previous select board meeting, and the town was C.C. on their letter. I believe there was also a write-up about it in the Cape Cod Chronicle. I was wondering if there would be an update on the town-initiated traffic study at tonight's meeting. North Harwich is deemed as an area of low density, and the road problems have significantly increased over the years on our narrow, windy, treacherous roads. There are speeding-heavy commercial vehicles, motorcycles, cars, on heavily traveled roads to the commercial bays, disposal area, a cut-through to other main roads, with school bus stops and bike path crossings, et cetera. These roads have poor sightlines, hills, forty-five-degree intersection with Main Street. Main Street approaching Depot Street intersection floods and heavy rain, and also the river overflows the fragile culvert bridge on Main Street in heavy rain. Backed-up traffic at two major intersections, et cetera. These road conditions would not be able to handle the potential of up to a thousand additional vehicles from the proposed Pine Oaks Village huge affordable housing development without major road improvements. We have seen so many accidents, deaths, property damage, racing cars, and burnouts, et cetera, in the proposed area of this development, which would make an entrance or exit very dangerous, and even worse with so many more additional vehicles. How many of Pine Oaks Village units will be affordable? What will the rent be and the income level? How many of Pine Oaks Village units will be at fair market value? How much will the rent be and the income level? Will more unaffordable, expensive rental units help our community? Pine Oaks Village says they will house our Cape Cod workforce. The potential tenants could be coming from anywhere, not just Cape Cod, and the affordable income threshold is very high, from what I have heard. The Harwich taxpayers will be paying higher taxes for the burden of the increased enrollments in our schools, roadway improvements, increased police and fire services, et cetera, because Pine Oaks Village is a tax-exempt nonprofit church that operates multiple housing, rental facilities. Would it be helpful for our concerned residents to have a signed petition against Pine Oaks Village? Would it make a difference? Considering there is already an affordable housing development underway at Route one-twenty-four and Queen Anne Road, do we really need another affordable housing development sandwiched between, so close between, the Route one-twenty-four project and the Eagle Pond Nursing Home housing product, although in Dennis, only accessible via Harwich, which will affect our roads? Can the town say that this Pine Oaks Village development is not needed at this time due to these other two housing projects in close proximity? This property would be a much better fit for Habitat for Humanity development, for owner-occupied homes, and still maintain the area of low-density designation. Thank you for your time to listen to my concerns and the issues we deal with every day on our roadways in North Harwich. Thank you, Teresa Johnson.
Thank you very much, Teresa. I appreciate that. And the chair, Julie Kavanaugh, is in Ireland, and so I did not receive that. But let me take a look at that email, and I will respond to you tomorrow personally.
Okay. I can forward it to you as well.
Thank you. Joe?
We will. I will share that with the board, as is our practice. I'll also make sure the comments are added to the comments that we're collecting for that process, the thirty-day review. So we'll, how many, did you say you sent? Two emails or just two?
I sent one, one to you and Julie.
Okay. All right. So we'll make sure we have both of those. We'll circulate them and keep them for the file for this process.
That'd be great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll just have Joe forward it to me.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Joe?
Hello, all. I'm Paula Miles. I live in North Harwich, near the intersection that we're all worrying about, intersections, I should say. I'm not going to add much, just to say that when I wrote to H. U. D.'s Catherine Racer, I got a response, an email from Pine Oaks Village. And it said, regarding incomes, the incomes in our community will range from under thirty percent of the H. U. D.-determined area median income, A. M. I., up to one hundred and ten percent of the A. M. I. You know, to people in the know, that makes sense. For those of us who are asking, what would it cost to live in there affordably? And that's only twenty-five percent of the units. What would it cost to live in the other units? How can this possibly be a nonprofit at that amount of money? We're not getting answers in dollars and cents. I would like to know, in actual dollars, what would it cost for an affordable unit? And how many actual affordable units will there be? We're hearing anything from two hundred and forty-eight total to two hundred and ninety-eight total. We don't know. We're asking, what is the actual number of units that are selling at or renting at fair market value, and what's the actual dollar rent for that? If we're going to be overwhelmed in our neighborhood for the sake of affordable housing, I think we deserve some answers about how affordable it is. And if it's going to be a nonprofit, I think we should know if it's truly not profitable. Somebody's making a profit. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Michael?
Two things. Public comment announcement, item B, town administrator present Pine Oaks Village Four financing application review process. What exactly is the financial review, and what should we be prepared for for next week? Is there, I understand what the process is, because you laid it out in a memo, but what are we actually reviewing?
First, if I could, it's not next week, it's the week after, September thirtieth. So in my email to you folks, I relied upon the regulations that have the factors that E. O. H. L. C. is going to rely upon to make a determination. They've talked about general things like, you know, the residential area, meaning, does this fit into the zoning? Rather straightforward questions. In their packet, they, the applicant, lay out a funding plan. They're asking E. O. H. L. C. to be the lead on helping them get subsidizing funds to help them with the project. I think the comment you might be getting to is the comment that I made, where, when you look at that section of the application, which we're hoping to post in full detail, if we don't have it by tomorrow, we'll post what we have and then try to add to it, so everybody has ample time. I believe it's accurate to say that the second-largest funding source in their financing scheme is from the Town of Harwich through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and through the town's Community Preservation Committee. So what we're going to do tomorrow as departments is look at all of those criteria that E. O. H. L. C. may rely upon to make their determination, for us to start making data, information, and statements available. We're going to bring all that back here for the thirtieth, so everybody here can have access to it and can talk about it. We're shooting for the thirtieth, so that we have the fallback for October seventh as well. The form has to be submitted in full by October ninth. So it's one of the many criteria that they're going to rely upon, but because it's a criteria that E. O. H. L. C. is going to rely upon, we're going to be creating commentary on those.
Okay. And not to further discussion, because it's not an agenda item, but how are we going to know, even on the thirtieth, what CPC is going to vote and what Housing Trust is going to vote in the future, unless that goes to the state as a confirmation that Affordable Housing Trust, for instance, is going to pay eighteen percent of their project, which is an astronomical amount of money, and a lot more money than we have in? How is the public and we going to know into the future what CPC is going to give or not give, and what the trust is going to give or not give?
I think that's actually commentary that we would add to the town's official response.
Okay.
Can I interrupt real quick? You mean the uncertainty of?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
It's just ironic that we're really not giving much of an opportunity for the public to speak, but yet the applicant is asking for eighteen-plus percentage of their money to come from the taxpayers, when they don't pay full taxes. And we don't know what the impact is actually going to be. And I'll just leave it at that, because we're not supposed to discuss it.
However, to those comments, the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust Fund and the Community Preservation Committee will be receiving those email, I mean, those documents as well. Maybe they tell us on the thirtieth that they have a plan, or maybe they tell us they're not aware of a plan either. But I also want to emphasize that the project eligibility phase is the very beginning of the beginning, as far as the government is concerned, certainly the Town of Harwich. All of this is going to be then building towards the applicant. If they get approval for project eligibility funding, which is highly likely, generally speaking, the Commonwealth will probably award this, there could be, there will be a site visit as part of the project eligibility. We're waiting to hear from the state when they set that up. They've said that board's going to attend, so we'll make that part of it. In the meantime, we, the town, have the right to prepare for the zoning board of appeals process. So Amy Questle, Christine Flynn are working with staff, and we're working on our right to have a consultant guide the town through that process. So for me, and the experiences that I've had with forty-B, project eligibility is a look-in time at a certain time. None of that changes what the town can weigh in on for the Z. B. A. hearing as well, so that when the zoning board of appeals goes through their comprehensive permit review, the town, either public bodies, public agencies, and the general public can weigh in on if the project were approved, should there be conditions that were assigned to that. So certainly, traffic is one of those things where there may be conditions if the zoning board feels compelled to issue the comprehensive permits. So this is the beginning of the beginning with months and probably a couple of years of process ahead of us. But we are trying to get everything out, so that when you start talking on the thirtieth, you have data in front of you and data on the October seventh.
Thank you. I appreciate that. The traffic, Mr. Chair, if we could try and get coincide a traffic study or where we're at with the traffic study on the thirtieth as well, that would be a good update for the public. On the other topic, Phase Three wastewater, I would like to add-
Mr. Chair, if I could, could I just respond on the traffic?
Yes.
So we're making V. H. B., so V. H. B. is working on our traffic studies. I've told them that North Harwich is the first of the two, Harwich, Brooklyn, the other. We're also sharing all of the data that we got from the state and would be looking for V. H. B. to inform us on the traffic study that's in there and any data that they have and will have on our own traffic study.
All right. Thank you for that as well. Hopefully, it's a traffic study, not based on Cape Cod Commission's antiquated process.
That's not our expectation.
I'll look forward to reading that. On the wastewater, Phase Three wastewater, I'd like to agenda a topic to discuss in O. P. M. I know that we've talked about G. H. D., and I was not here at the meeting when we had the update, but we did discuss, in the past, we've discussed having our own Town of Harwich person for the board, and I think, given it's a fifty-million-dollar project, just passing it off to a one-eight-eight-eight number is a terrible idea. So I'd like to have the discussion about having our own project manager and somebody that our residents can rely on for information.
Thank you, Michael. And Joe, I'm just going to add to that, if I may. I think this is, this project is a very, very big project for the Town of Harwich. I want to make sure for the public that there are sufficient opportunities for the public to be heard all along the way, and I also want to make sure that the public has access to all the information pretty much in real time, as we do. So if, you had mentioned, I'm just clarifying, you had mentioned that it would be available, this packet would be available to the public by the thirtieth, I guess? Now, would they be able to find that in our agenda packet? Is that something you're going to post in a different place? I just don't want people to have a hard time finding this.
Understood completely. No, the first part I'm talking about is, we, the town, have not, I have found no evidence to suggest that the state has forwarded to us a complete packet, because it was understood to be the thirty-day letter, which we have, which we have a copy of. And then it was an application in five parts. We have parts one, two, and five, not three and four. So I'm going to work with staff tomorrow, like I said, at the department head meeting, and I'm going to be talking to Sarah about, we either create, you know, a site where we can upload that information, like we've done for wastewater, and then as we get information, commentary, and data, we'd be adding it to that. It will be in your packet for the thirtieth, although, actually, check that. I'm trying to give department heads as much time to be as comprehensive as they can, so I've asked them to submit all of that for the Friday before your meeting. So I can certainly share it with the board and upload it to the website, and we can have a separate packet available. We also plan on having information available on the thirtieth. So as we get it, we will create a portal on the website, we'll share it as broadly as we can, and that's just on the P. E. L., when the, excuse me, the project eligibility letter. The Z. B. A. process, we're going to hear more on that through town council and relevant staff.
Is it reasonable, if this board's temperature, was to have a dedicated space on our webpage for this project? Is it reasonable to assume that we could do that?
I think it's reasonable to assume you could do it for the project eligibility, because that's going to you as the chief executive officers. The forty-B part of it should go through the zoning board process, in my opinion.
Understood. I just don't want people to have to hunt in different places to find information, so-
And we'll talk about that at the department.
We can talk about that at the, yes. Thank you very much.
Yep.
I think we're still in public comment. Does anyone else have a public comment?
Sure.
Sorry, Pete.
No, no, I don't, nope. Sign up, I put the glasses on.
Teresa Johnson, North Harwich. So it was my understanding that Pine Oaks Village withdrew their application for CPC money, and I thought that you had to do it, you only had a certain timeframe, a certain time of year, to apply for CPC funds. So how can they, if they pay no taxes to our town, how do they have any right to get free money from us taxpayers that's used for our community? They're not paying taxes, and they want our money for free. That's double-dipping.
So I appreciate what you're saying. I hear it and respect it a hundred percent. I think the best I can say to you, and this is a public comment, so we're not supposed to go back and forth, let it shake out. This is going to be a long process. So just let it shake out, but your comment has not gone unnoticed.
What is the timeframe to usually apply for CPC funds?
Joe?
Typically, the CPC has an October first deadline for what they call preliminary applications. They build off of that, and I think sometime in early December, they finalize them. Once their applications are finalized at CPC, they send it to me, and it goes before the board for articles and review, as well as the finance committee. But generally speaking, October first is when the first round of applications are due. With regard to the project eligibility letter, the information is broken down into five phases. So they've identified, excuse me, let me say that clearly, they've identified a total dollar amount related to the Town of Harwich through those two groups, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and CPC, for each of the five phases. But there's no breakdown yet of how that breaks out between those two public bodies. And again, we'll be reaching out to the public bodies to see if they're aware of this and if they have any comments on it.
So, and I don't want to keep going back and forth, but if we have to give the state an answer by October seventh or ninth, I've heard two different dates, and the preliminary deadline to apply is October first, how can we tell the state that they're getting our CPC money if we haven't even gotten to the October first deadline date?
Because it's two completely different timeframes. They're not looking for CPC money for October first of two thousand and twenty-four for the five phases of their project. The project eligibility is at the state level. The state's going to do a review. We do our review of the information. We gather our comments. I'm suggesting that we talk about it on the thirtieth, October seventh and seventh, for the board to finalize the letter. So the town should be responding within thirty days. That's by October ninth. With regard to Mid-Cape Church Hill and Pine Oaks Village and all that, they're able, like any other institution, to apply for funds through CPC and funds through the Affordable Housing Trust, among others. It doesn't mean that the review that we're doing is tied into that. The town wants to know what their schedule is. There's a general breakout in their application, but this isn't the first and last time that the conversation will come up. And it's not necessarily that Pine Oaks is looking for that money in Phase One for this year. We don't know. That's part of the process, but we know there's five phases. They had an application in the process last year, and they withdrew that application. But that doesn't mean they withdrew going forward on this project.
And how does the residents get notified of who's applying?
So Community Preservation Committee has meetings on the applications, so all their meetings are public. The select board talks about it as articles, so those will be public. So there'll be various occasions where people will be talking about these applications, which may become articles.
So if I may jump in here, there's going to be plenty of opportunities for you to get better answers to these questions as we move forward. So if it's okay with you, I'd like to move forward with the rest of public comment, but I don't want you to feel at all that we're not hearing you and that we're not going to give you and the rest of the public a huge amount of time to weigh in on this, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Linda?
Oh, that was sounding like that conversation was all getting outside of public comment and into open meeting law issues. I just have a request, which, Linda Sibula, I just have a request that all of this data doesn't get dumped on October thirtieth, because then no one will have time to read it, that it really does need to be put on the website. If you only have three parts, put the three parts up. But it's got to get out to the public, because asking someone to read, I've seen the data, the parts one, three, and four, because you sent it out to, Town Administrator did send it out and asked it to be sent to committees, and it took me a while to read through the whole thing. So sending it in a packet- So, sending it in a packet two days before your board meeting is not going to be helpful to the public. It really doesn't. So, I'm going to urge you, Mr. Acting Chair, or whatever you are today, Mr. Acting Chair, is that what you are? You've got the hammer. But if you could ensure the public that this stuff is going to be getting out sooner rather than later because later has been, unfortunately, what has been happening in too many things. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments and I had already mentioned that and I will work on that over the next few days. Thank you.
Robert Doan, on Lysin Harwich and representative of Pine Oaks Village. I do want to clarify one thing that's been mentioned several times tonight about taxes. We pay the same taxes as any other property that is on the shy list, which I believe is 50% of the appraised value of the property. So, we definitely do pay taxes and I do want to make sure that's clear. And we are really looking forward to the public comments in a couple of weeks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Doan. Any more public comment? Hi, Patrick.
Good evening, everybody. Hi, Patrick, out East Harwich. I'm glad I didn't miss this opportunity. I'm going to speak with respect to the proposed wastewater, or, I'm sorry, the stormwater control-
Can I stop you real quick?
Yeah.
I'm not going to stop you from speaking if you still want to. The applicant has asked for a delay.
Oh.
A continuance.
I'm sorry, a continuance to September 30th.
Okay.
So, most likely, that will not be heard tonight.
Most likely?
It can't be.
It will not be heard tonight.
All right, all right. And September 30th is your next Monday evening?
It's not our next, but that's when they've requested.
All right, good, good. I appreciate it.
So, it's up to you.
Well-
And make it brief. I'm kidding.
No, no, I will. I'm just concerned with the, you know, Harwich is a urban, is a rural setting, rural committee.
Patrick, I have to stop you one more time and I apologize, but the public hearing is for a stormwater-
Yeah.
Okay. So, we are very limited in what we can discuss regarding this public hearing. If you want to make a brief statement about the project as a whole-
That's all I really wish to, you know. I'm just concerned that the development that happens here in Harwich is steering Harwich in the wrong direction. Harwich is a rural mom-and-pop place and we need to retain that and not become suburbanized, metropolitanized, and overbuilt with development. We're losing on nature. We're losing exactly the reason why we're here, the woods, the ponds, the seashore. And I wish, I know it's all going to go forward, that's the right, they own the property, they can do whatever they want, but I'm just making the personal comment. I wish we had more sensitivity for the reason why Harwich residents live here. All right? So, thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Patrick, for being here.
All right.
Any other public comment? Okay, moving on. Let's move to item 5, letter A. Can I get a motion to approve the select board meeting minutes?
Sure, for discussion. I'll move to approve the minutes of August 23, 2024.
Second.
Motion and second, do we have a discussion?
If I could.
You may.
On the 23rd minutes, I don't see any language pertaining to the motion, the second, or the roll call vote to enter into an executive session.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
So, my point is, without that, I would not vote to approve them this evening. So, I'm happy to withdraw my motion if somebody wants to withdraw a second, but-
So, withdrawn.
Motion withdrawn, second withdrawn, motion withdrawn, so we will push this to next meeting.
Motion will approve the select board meeting minutes of September 4, 2024.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, they weren't long enough. I'll nitpick and it's only because it's my name that I picked it up, but on page 15, last paragraph, one letter missing from my last name. Not the end of the world.
Which letter?
I'm going to let them figure it out. The letter A.
There it is. Yes, thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4-0, Joe.
And that was on the fourth, correct?
That is for the fourth and we're table, pushing forward the 23rd. Thank you. Mr. Pikarski with an A. Can I have you read the public hearing notice, please?
If you bear with me one minute.
Before you-
Yep.
Just through you, Mr. Chair, Joe. If she reads that, wouldn't we immediately make the motion, it's not tabling, if I continue without taking testimony, just-
Right, I believe what you're going to have clerk of the select board do is read the notice of public hearing into the record.
And then take a motion.
Then there would be a motion to open, there would be a second, there would be a vote to open, and then there should be a vote following that based on staff recommendation to continue.
Without any comment.
Correct.
Thank you for this, Joe. Town of Harwich Notice of Public Hearing, September 16, 2024 pursuant to Mass. Journal Law, Chapter 83, Section 10, and Chapter 295 of the Code of the Town of Harwich. The Select Board, acting as the Town of Harwich Stormwater Authority, will hold the public hearing on Monday, September 16, 2024, no earlier than 6:00 PM in the Griffin Room at the Harwich Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, Mass. 02645. Strong tree engineering as representative, William Marsh as applicant, and 1594 Orleans Road SNL Realty and 1598 Orleans Road JBM Family Limited Partnership as owners seek a local stormwater permit through application filed pursuant to the Town of Harwich Comprehensive Stormwater and illicit discharge regulations for proposed, going to read it as it states, 7, 8-lot subdivision, 1594 and 1598 Orleans Road. The property is located at 1594 and 1598 Orleans Road, assesses map 107, Russell S. 2-1 and S. 2-2. All of butters and other interested persons are invited to attend. For further information, please contact the administration office at 508-430-7513. Application package available for review at the Town of Harwich Stormwater Permit.
Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
With a second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moved to continue the public hearing until September 30th meeting.
No earlier than 6:00 PM?
No earlier than 6:00 PM.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
4-0.
Leave it open.
4-0, Mr. Chair.
Yes, 4-0, Joe. Thank you. All right, thank you. Pete, on to new business. We'll have a discussion on pursuing a community compact grant for charter review services. Joe, you want to tell us a little bit about that?
Certainly do. Let me just get my notes together here if I could. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, when you were talking, I think at your last meeting generally about charter review and things of that nature, I made reference to a grant opportunity. I want to emphasize that despite the letter being dated August 13, 2024 by the governor's office, that came in by email about a week, excuse me, the middle of the week of Labor Day. So, as I mentioned at your board meeting last week, these are community compact grants generally, and you can see that they have the categories of best practices, information technology, efficiency and regionalization, and municipal fiber. And so, within the best practices, they further identify a general management and governance best practice. They define the general management and governance best practice as one of three areas that the grant could rely upon or could impact upon. The first is to perform a municipality-wide assessment of operations, to identify foundational barriers to and potential solutions for, long-term financial sustainability, staffing stability, and efficient functions and services. The second, that use could be for the performance of an assessment for the municipality's executive branch organizational structure, including a review of the responsibilities, authority, and span of control of executive branch officers, of the mandates, functions, and structures of elected boards, committees, and officers, and of the mandates, functions, and structures of major departments. And the last potential use would be to support, to establish a committee to review an existing charter or to draft a new or first charter for the municipality. So, knowing that there's been discussion in the community, I wanted to make the town and the board aware of it. You can see that there is a draft application and that's just to show you the categories that would be filled out. So, the town, as you can see in the governor's letter, I believe, they talk about the funds that are available, they're on a rolling basis, and they approve, I think, as you apply. So, this was meant to be brought back so you could further discuss it.
Thank you, Joe, for that. Does the board have any thoughts?
A general question, if I could. So, I noticed on a lot of these, Joe, it said you can't apply if you applied in fiscal year '24, which clearly, in this particular case, we haven't. Did we apply for any of these in '24?
Yeah, we've been getting these grants since the town's been a community compact community. I think you've been in it since 2017 or '16. We actually, during my tenure, we got an IT grant that led to the Open Gov application that we use in regulatory. So, we do follow these every other year. And it's a good position to be in if you have to wait a year because that means you got something. So, we regularly apply for different grants under this program.
And so, that was my follow-up. So, if you got any category, then you're not eligible the following year?
Correct.
For any other?
If you get a community compact grant of any sort, you're out for the next year.
Okay.
Yep.
So, last year, we did not get anything.
Because we had one the year before.
Correct, okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other board members?
I might as well say something. Unless my memory doesn't serve me correctly here, we got $75,000 from a town meeting to look into the structure of the charter. We went to the Massachusetts Municipal Association's Management Association and we had one presentation. And we went back to them again and we had another presentation. And there was no indication whatsoever that we had a faulty charter. And I, for one, am not prepared to do this or in any way alter the balance that we currently have between the executive and the select board. It just doesn't, if we were going to do something, it should be something that's useful, not something we just keep going around and around and around with.
Thank you. Don, Michael, anything?
I have.
I just have a question.
Mm-hmm.
If, in fact, the charter commission does become live, are these funds available to be used for, I assume the charter commission, if that became live, would cost something to the Town of Harwich? And are the funds, if we get this grant, I know we, as Don said, we have $75,000 that's available. If we were to, and I believe your number was 75,000 additional dollars in the grant, is that what it was?
Just for discussion purposes.
Just for discussion purposes.
Sure.
Would, could that also be used to help fund the needs of the charter commission if, in fact, it became live?
I believe so. We would have to put that language in the application itself. So, in the draft, I put general language, I didn't put language specific to a charter commission. I think, you know, part of that is because there could be a charter commission effort that was born out of a select board directive. So, there's no official effort, as I understand it, through the select board, right? So, we could put specific language in there if it's the board's desire to put in for the grant. And we could talk about, as I've written there, that the town could engage a consultant for substantive review of the current Harwich charter. That timeframe could match a charter commission of ones adopted.
Board, any comments?
You know, good point, as far as the charter commission goes and all the signatures that have or have not been collected so far. If there's going to be a charter commission and they have a vision, I would much rather spend grant money on said vision than taxpayers' money on said vision. So, I don't see any harm in getting it because we don't, we don't really have a direction. And to Don's point, we have had them before us and so far, everyone's come up with zippo other than some typos and some language changes. So, at this point, I have no interest in changing the charter or even talking about it anymore. But because this group is born, why not at least apply for something to give them a mechanism to move forward with their vision? So, it's not just nine peoples. I think Harwich would be great if we did this, their view and the 15% of the population that might participate, that they could actually have some tools in the toolbox to get some real work and some real consulting. So, I would support it.
Don?
And I would actually support it too if the language was specific enough to state that it was solely for the purposes of as-yet-unformed charter commission.
Michael?
I could support that because we have 75 sitting in an account we can't figure out how to spend. So, we could always go back for a supplemental article if they came. So, I think Don's on to something and I'm fine with that.
Anyone else? No? Okay.
No, not at this point. It was a discussion item. You know, personally, I'd like to do a little bit of my homework on it, but as far as other alternatives, but on hearing the conversation tonight, I tend to agree that if this group is going to be in existence, we might as well have some money to support it.
Joe, is there a deadline for this application?
Yes and no. They've started accepting applications. Applications will be accepted as they come in and funds are, when the grants are, if the grants are approved, the funds are dispersed, I think, within a 30 to 45-day period. They keep doing that until they run out of funds.
So, that's the yes and no.
Correct.
And I would prefer not to miss this opportunity. I think, is there, is it reasonable for you to come back to us next week with some language or the following week, some language with respect to what board member Howell had suggested?
Yes, I think what you're talking about is, in a draft application, I would modify the box that has the language there. I could say something along the lines of, the town would seek the grant funds to support a future charter commission, which may be adopted as early as next spring.
What I don't want to do is I want to have 10 meetings on this and then lose the grant. So, how does that sound?
Let me throw one more thing in the hopper because you can only apply for this every other year if you're successful.
Mm-hmm.
When you come back with that language, can you also come back with anything that we might be not funding next year because we're asking for, to be devoted to the charter?
I can answer that part first. We have not, we, the administrative arm of the government, have not talked about community compact grants other than what we're talking about now. If there's no desire to pursue this grant, my next step is to share this with the department heads and say, are there any other categories where you think we can seek funds? So, we always try to pursue a community compact grant. You have right of first refusal, perhaps.
That's where I was going with this. You may want to ask them so that we have an idea of, we either do this or alternatively, the staff would like to do this.
To Pete's point, just more information. That would be great if you could do that, you know, for the 30th, maybe?
True.
Okay. Anything else from the board?
Excellent, thank you.
Michael, I'm going to let you take this one if you don't mind. This is your request.
Yep. The new chair of the voter information committee reached out. They're about to have their first meeting and they want to know if there's any direction from the select board other than past practice. So, it's really, is there anything on the voter information committee side that the board would like to see?
You're the liaison.
I am.
Thank you.
They're going to have a meeting and talk about what they did the past few years. Last year, we missed because we did not have a quorum of that committee. So, we did not do the debate stuff. We did not, there was several things we missed. So, they know what they've already done. Is there anything that the board would like to see them doing other than the TV programs and the debates?
I'll certainly give it some thought and I appreciate them reaching out. Did they share with you any thoughts that they had that they would like to?
I asked them, I asked them for that. I asked them in their first meeting if they could at least talk about past practice and any suggestions they might have.
Awesome. I'll be happy to get back to you with some thoughts.
Thank you.
What is the date that they would begin to?
They're going to start meeting very soon, I think, on the 20th, but I could be wrong. They're going to meet this month, so.
All right.
And they're certainly going to talk about past practice. So, this isn't urgent. This really is just to see if the board wants them to do anything more.
Excellent. So, if the board wants to email me with anything that they think would help, then I can forward that along.
I would take that from any member of the public that wants to weigh in as well.
Sure, good point. Thank you. We'll move to item C. We'll move to item C. Discussion and vote to appoint town administrators, hearing officer, and conduct a public hearing for an alleged liquor license violation that occurred on August 31st, 2024, at the Lucky Labrador, Inc., DBA perks, 545 Route 28.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Only discussion I have is we voted something similar in our last meeting or the meeting before. If the hearing officer could combine them, I think that that would be a nice thing to do for the business.
That was going to be my request, if you voted to refer.
And your request is to combine?
In conjunction with the other hearing?
In conjunction with the other. Okay. So, we motioned in the second. No more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Four to zero, Joe.
And then, I will be reaching out to the party to tell them that we have two, and the town's looking to have them at the same hearing date.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Pikarski, could I get a motion on D, please?
Move to approve a special permit application for a one-day wine and malt permit for Cindy Ennis, event to be held on November 9, 2024, 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at 204 Sisson Road.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
One more, Mr. Pikarski?
Motion to approve a special permit application for a one-day wines and malt permit for Mary Smith, event to be held on October 6, 2024, 2:30 p.m. to 5:30 p.m. at Brooks Park.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Pete, Don, sorry.
That's okay, Frank. In the application, it's saying, "Will I package snacks and non-alcoholic beverages," but the request is for a liquor license. Is that just the entertainment, or? I'm just confused.
Joe?
Is there going to be any alcohol there, or is it just entertainment, or?
Where do, Don, where do you see alcohol?
I thought that that's what we were going to discuss. It's just for the use of the gazebo, then.
Can you grab that?
It's an entertainment license. That's going to lead to another, that's going to lead to another question.
Understood. Thank you for catching that.
So, I would say that it's an incorrect statement on item New Business E, based on both the application and the special permit. The special permit indicates one-day entertainment event to be held. So, it is not a one-day. I think that might have been copied over incorrectly.
So, at this point, can we?
We can correct it next week.
We can correct it next week?
Yep.
Without problem. Great. Thank you.
That leads to another question before we go too far. We established that this is the body that requests the use of the gazebo. I mean, that was kind of like what we did a few months ago. But there was some criteria associated with that.
Keep going, please.
We, I think we had talked about nonprofits.
Is that a question or a statement to me?
It's a real question.
So, first off, I would say, is this a nonprofit? I don't believe it is.
I'm just bringing it up because we had a policy.
Yep.
Discussion.
We did. Board?
Yeah. Maybe we should just get in touch with the applicant and find out what the intent is. And to Don's point, yes, we did, as a matter of practice, but we have at least, we have approved one because of where the money was going, but it was not a 501(c)(3), which was PUGFest. So, we have already gone beyond that. And I believe the conversation that we have, I know the conversation we had related to the gazebo in Brooks Park was that we were not going to give people permission to use it anymore and then divide it up and charge taxpayers the use of it. So, maybe a little more description in the application and maybe a conversation with the applicant as to what the intent is before it comes back to us would be, would be good.
And if anything, would be for sale at this?
Yeah, I'm okay with all of that. I just wanted to bring that up because it was going to be brought up when we came back anyway.
I'll withdraw my second.
Motion withdrawn. Motion is withdrawn. Joe, you get some more information from the applicant, if you don't mind?
We will.
We can bring that back next Monday, easy enough.
Yep. Certainly.
Thank you.
The one we did approve.
On to Old Business A. Update on Brooks Academy Museum and next steps. Don, I'm going to let you open with this one.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm trying, and I don't want this to become bizarro, but we, we had a meeting, I believe it was late July, of the stakeholders and the select board subcommittee and administration. We came out of that with a plan, and the plan that we came out of it with is not what we're left with at the moment. So, all I care about, before I get back to having another stakeholder meeting, is how did it come to pass that we withdrew the request from the state, number one? Number two, if indeed we have an alternate path, I'd like to see a piece of paper with somebody's signature on it that grants the relief that we were talking about relative to the use of the first floor. Right now, in either scenario, we were looking at using the first floor of Brooks Academy starting next season. I understand that there's a considerable amount of work. You're probably, you're going to need a couple of months of volunteer work to get everything all set up again. So, I mean, there's no, there was no urgency other than the fact that we were appealing an original hearing that we didn't show up at. So, the question I have is, how did it come to pass that that got withdrawn and under whose authority? That's the first, first thing.
Joe?
So, if the question is, how did the AAB meeting come to not have our agenda topic? In the same manner in which the application for the agenda topic came up, and that was Doug Manley at Spencer Preservation Group made the recommendation to Sean Libby, the facilities manager. Doug Manley filled out the application, presented it to Sean, I reviewed it, and I signed it, and we had the hearing set up. After Sean Libby met with Doug Manley to report out from the shareholder, excuse me, stakeholder meeting in mid-July, in August, Mr. Manley came back and said, "This is a change in concept, so if you're just looking to use the first floor, you should not go in front of the AAB." Mr. Libby then asked Mr. Manley to confirm that. He confirmed it with AAB. Mr. Manley presented Sean Libby with a letter, and he asked me to sign it, and I signed it in person after hours after a time off, so to speak. This is a topic that I reached out to the board member on, I believe, September 3rd to update. So, our architectural consultant has made the determination, our facilities maintenance manager agreed, and our building commissioner has agreed. So, now, the building commissioner, the facilities maintenance manager, and the architect are working with the subs to get the certificate of occupancy for the first floor of that building without the need to go to state agency for intervention.
Don?
And if I didn't say it, I signed the application, I signed the letter.
You did. Don?
Okay. Without getting too deep into this, there's no point in having a subcommittee where everybody votes on things in public and with a camera and everything and walking out and changing the ground rules afterwards. I would very much appreciate it in the future if a course of action that does not follow what we initially anticipated taking occurs or is recommended, that you contact the chair of that committee in enough time to be able to have a discussion about it. Now, I know there was a phone call, but that phone call was after hours, and you were leaving the office. And I don't get the impression that I had any, would have had any impact on it because the timeline seems like it had been withdrawn by that time. I don't want to get into it. He said, she said. I just want to say, as the future goes on, and we have meetings where there's a whole bunch of stakeholders, there's people that were conveying the authority from the select board to have a subcommittee, and we all came to a unanimous conclusion on this, it was worth coming back to let us know that that was going to happen so we didn't find out about it after the fact. That's number one. And I, the second thing, it, well, first of all, let me stay on one. When do you anticipate the building commissioner is going to sign something?
As soon as all the conditions are met. I, I'm reluctant to give a timeframe based on the inaccuracies that you just recorded back about the comments that I've made. So, I don't think it's proper for me to put a timeframe on a regulatory process that's been undergoing for the last three weeks with the architect, the facilities maintenance manager, and the regulatory departments. I can tell you, when I met with everybody but the architect last week, I told them that this should get done as expeditiously as possible. So, I would hope within a week or two. As of today, the building commissioner had not received the materials that he requested last week and the week before from the architect. By all means, what inaccuracies? There was a discussion between a member of the stakeholder group, the facilities maintenance manager, and myself. And there was a request to convey information in my absence, and I'm not going to get into the details of my absence. I think the board is very clear of what I was dealing with during that absence. However, a phone call was made, an opportunity for discussion was requested, and rather than having that, the next night at a board meeting, a board member criticized the work of a clerical member.
So, at this point, I think you've got your answer about who signed?
There was absolutely no criticism of a clerical member.
Hold on, excuse me. The answer has been given. That town administrator signed the paperwork. Your request moving forward, if I heard you, and I just want to make sure I heard you correctly so that we're all on the same page.
If we're to have a stakeholder group, then that, those types of actions should be done together, not separately.
And I think that's reasonable. Now, I'd like to go to the next number two, if we could.
Yeah, it's especially concerning because, I mean, listen to the comments about the town meeting. Personally, I don't believe the timeline is going to work for a special town meeting involved. But assuming it does, it also doesn't seem like, what we had tried to do with the stakeholders group was try to make this as transparent as possible. The first step would be, can we use the building for the summer in a limited fashion? And then, could we finish the building so that we are completely done with everything that needs to happen? And I mean, needs. I think it diminishes public confidence if we keep nibbling away at things where we do a little bit this, well, a little bit, $100,000 or $1 million used to be real money. If we do a little bit at a time and then come back again and ask for more money, and it appears to me that the scope of the work is, forget about the money because that, in the capital plan, does fluctuate, but the scope of the plan for the actual work statement, it is insufficient to get to the complete work statement of what would be required to do, to finish that building. If that's really the case, we are truly rolling the dice by going to a fall town meeting and requesting a two-thirds vote to actually try to amend the chart, the actual capital plan.
Can I ask you two questions? So, when you speak summer, you speak of 2025.
Yes. So, we are ensuring, if there is a subsequent action for the building commissioner, we're ensuring that that's nailed down.
Meaning the occupancy permit for next?
Next summer across the first floor.
Understood. And then, my second question to you is?
Mr. Chair, could I just inject a ask, interject?
Sure.
The certificate of occupancy is going to be issued within this calendar year, for use within this calendar year, not for the summer. I don't understand the reference to the summer.
I, well, do you want it?
Yeah. That was always the plan, that we needed to have some mechanism to allow for the use of the first floor this coming summer. That was discussed in the stakeholder meeting.
And I think if we achieve that goal?
Wait, let's listen to town administrator because it doesn't sound like that's capable of happening with this particular exemption or waiver.
I heard differently.
I didn't say that at all. I guess what I'm, what I'm getting to is, if a certificate of occupancy is issued that allows the use of the first floor to be occupied by all types of parties, individuals, public, et cetera, and you're not going forward in November for capital, that would change, I think, what the building commissioner is looking at. Part of the disconnect has been that there was a conversation between the architect, the facilities maintenance manager, and the building commissioner at the time relative to the capital request that was to have gone before town meeting in spring of 2024. The facilities maintenance manager informed the building commissioner and the architect that the town is looking to get more funds available in November to continue on with the projects. So, if we're not going forward in November, that's a policy decision that I'm not aware has been made, but that would change the process that the building commissioner is going through. If I could just try to say it one more time?
Please.
The architect, when he was told of the outcome of the stakeholder meeting, that the desire was to be on the first floor, to not be on the second floor, or the basement for that matter, but the second floor in the quote, "short term," there's, there's no objection, there's no need for AAB, Architectural Access Board Review. That's entirely a local matter, and had we gone forward on the 9th, the architect and the facilities maintenance manager said that that would be the outcome, that they would have taken no action because it's purely a local matter. However, the facilities maintenance manager and the architect, working with the building commissioner, are working on that information from the stakeholder meeting in the summer. So, when you talk about an occupancy permit for next summer, I can't, I'm not making any comments to that tonight because that's a change in the pertinent facts that the regulatory departments are working on.
Well, please.
That's why I wanted to have this discussion because we're like two ships passing in the night here. The conversation at the stakeholder meeting talked about the timeline for both things being accomplished by virtue of saying they don't operate in the winter, they could get up and running for next season just at the first floor, and in September, they would close. And by that time, we'd have a construction contract, and there was even some remote prospect that with the construction work, that we wouldn't lose the successor summer either, the one in '26. But that's, what you're just saying now is substantially different than what everybody had intended. They wanted to get in the building this coming summer. They don't do anything in the winter. There's no program in the winter.
Then, that is not the application that the architect submitted based on the information they had in June, and it is not the information that the facilities maintenance, building commissioner, and the architect were talking about. So, I don't disagree that there's actions missing here and there. I will put out, if I may, my frustration. There would have been an ample opportunity to have had the stakeholder discussion last Wednesday as scheduled to get into exactly this. It's not going to be as productive as we all hoped this evening, asking me questions about three parties that are working on something, and they believe they're all working from the same song sheet.
That's not my song sheet. But that's why we're having this discussion because your song sheet doesn't get us to where we wanted to go.
So, again, it's not my song sheet, and we're missing the singers.
Here's one of them.
If I may, that's not who I was referring to. The architect, the facilities maintenance manager, and the building commissioner.
Without disparaging the architect, would this be the same one who actually never told us about the first meeting with the AAB?
The one and the same.
Yeah. Okay.
That was an interesting way to ask that question. Pete?
Could I just clarify? So, and Joe, I'm sure you can answer this for me. So, it's, you're talking about building commissioner. Are you talking about our new building commissioner?
So, no, we, we have.
You started it, correct?
We've always had a building commissioner. So, Tom Winger was our interim building commissioner. We're allowed to have more than one, so Tom never left even when Jack started. Now, when Jack was, Jack Me was here as our primary building commissioner, Jack was the lead. He would consult with Tom Winger and Dave Anderson, our inspectors. But Tom Winger remains our building commissioner because we need to have one. That's the individual that I'm speaking about.
Thank you.
To your point, and then I'll come to you, Linda, to your point about the fall town meeting and the two-third vote, do you feel that way because it's not heavily attended?
Because the scope of the work has changed. It will require a two-thirds vote to get anything other than what was originally in that request for a town meeting this past May. Yeah, I think it's a hell of a gamble. I mean, you're going to be looking at a meeting that is not as well-attended, and if, especially if we're not particularly forthright, I guess is the word, about whether there's any extra work that needs to be done because this, this building has been the subject of ongoing requests. Not that it does. Not that it doesn't need it, but the public is trying to get a handle on, is there an end to this?
So let me, let me just, for the public and for myself, the ask on the capital plan was a million, two?
1.21 million.
Okay, sounds close. 1.21 million, and you feel, I believe, that, what's, what is a more reasonable number?
The outs, at the outside, probably 2 million, but certainly 1.5 for extra work that's not being contemplated right now.
So how do we get there from here?
That's my point. It's going to take some heavy lifting, if indeed we can get a majority of the board to even call a special fall town meeting. That, that has not been broached yet, I mean, about us calling a meeting. I'm not sure whether that's a vote or not. It's, it's starting to get late, is my point.
If I may, you're, you're saying, I think, that 1.5 plus would be a change, and that would be hard to get at a fall town meeting?
I think so, because it's not just that the money is inflated for the work that was stated in the, in the spring, it's that there's more work that will cost more money. So it's not just, yes, it's not just an inflation factor, it is more work than was contemplated.
So inflation and scope?
Yes.
Have both changed?
Both, yes.
So do you feel that a regular town meeting, an annual town meeting, we would have a better opportunity?
I don't know if we can get the building nailed down to be open on the first floor for next summer, that it makes a whole heck of a lot of difference on the timeline to anybody who wants to occupy the building. If we can get the money at a regular town meeting in the, in the amount that we actually really want to finish the building, we could probably roll with an architect's contract in the middle of summer and get a work statement and probably get construction going.
In October.
In October is, yeah.
Okay. Joe, and then I'll come to you.
I'm confused as to when the scope changed. The application that was submitted by the facilities maintenance manager, which was a combination applica, or an application that contemplated everything that was being contemplated for May 2024 annual town meeting. It was my recollection, it was the facilities maintenance manager's recollection, and I'll stop there because I don't want to put words in anyone else's mouths, that that's what the September 11th meeting was going to be about. But when did this board vote to change the capital outlay application for the 1.21 million dollars? Because that's not what I was operating on at the board through your 2024 annual town meeting discussions. I'm not aware that there was any vote to change that application.
That's why we had the stakeholder meeting, and that's why I asked both Linda and Sean to develop their own lists about what they considered to be the final conclusion. They don't match, and to the extent that they don't match, let's say that there's some I-wishes that are listed in the list that came in. I suspect that there's a few things that I need that are also in there that aren't going to be funded. And I'm pretty sure when I was listening to Sean that that's exactly what he was saying. We are stuck with only those things that were contemplated in May to be approved in October, nothing more.
No, I'm sorry. It was my understanding that the so-called wish list discussion was the purpose of the September 11th meeting. I have not seen, nor have I been presented with, the facilities maintenance manager list vis-à-vis any other list. So again, I'd ask the question of, when did the scope officially change on the 1.21 million? Because it was my understanding and staff's understanding that that was going to be a discussion on September 11th.
Mr. Chair, there was no September 11th meeting ever scheduled. I mean, you may have discussed that with me, and I said that we weren't going to hold a meeting until we had some assuredness about what the path was going to be going forward. I couldn't even contemplate what an agenda item would look like without knowing why we didn't follow the original plan. And I know I had that discussion with you.
Well, I would just say to that, that coming out of the stakeholder meeting, the intention was to have a meeting within a day or two after the AAB meeting, and I think that is.
And that blew up, so.
Well, but I think that is the September 11th that, that.
That never happened.
I just want to be clear about that, correct? There was never a formal meeting, but that was the intention coming out of the stakeholder meeting.
And you may want to listen to Linda's comments about what is needed and as opposed to what is just wished for.
Well, we'll absolutely get to that, Mr. Powers.
To that point, however, staff was working on and was aware that we should be prepared for a meeting on September 11th.
Thank you. Linda?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was going to hum a few bars of something in terms of the other singers, but not probably I wouldn't be able to do that adequately.
We haven't given you the entertainment license.
I don't have an entertainment license. I have just some comments to make. One is, as a member of that stakeholder meeting, I haven't seen any draft minutes, so we're all talking about stuff that I don't know if there are any draft minutes that were leaflittered around to the stakeholders. So those minutes might indicate what anybody thought was supposed to happen. Secondly, I'm, I'm becoming a little grumpier about using the list that the Harwich Historical Society came up with, which is a page and a half, and there ain't nothing on there that's a wish list. If there was a wish list, that page thing would have been three pages long. We put down what has to be done to make that building inhabitable, and if somebody is going to say that the wires hanging from the ceiling are a wish list, we're going to have a problem. Next comment is, we committed at that July stakeholders' meeting that we would come up with our list of must-haves. I have had zero response from anyone as to the receipt of that list, and it went to the town administrator, I think it was going to go to Sean Libby. I believe that it went to the both of you. I heard squattule. It is now two months later, but somebody is trotting off to come up with an occupancy Do you guys have any idea what, what is actually being requested? And to hear tonight that if we got an occupancy permit, or a temporary first floor, blah, 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 it would only be good for this year? So we'd have to go back again in January? If somebody doesn't start being transparent about this, and I hear transparency from the table a lot, this has been anything but transparent, and it is getting extremely frustrating. So was that page and a half list received? Hello? Did anybody receive it? Who's working on it? And how about you talk to the people who actually created the list rather than talking to yourselves and not having the information? Having conversations that don't include the tenant and Brooks Academy Museum commission people is a little outrageous, because now you're going to tell us what you want. We didn't have any, any say in the CPC, the, sorry, the town meeting application for the capital plan as to what was going to be in there. I can't really speak to what's in that million, one, two, or two, one, because we didn't have any say. Nobody asked us. We're the tenant, and we're getting left out in the dark again, because now this is all news. We're working on this, and the architect is this, and a couple of people had meetings. Are you working with information, or are you making it up? I'm, I'm really very frustrated by this process, and I'm finding that transparency is not part of this process, nor is communication, nothing. I'm very disappointed, but I suppose that's okay, too.
Thank you, Linda. So I'll, I'll ask Don if I, what, what was your intention with the list? The, the list of?
We left the meeting with the understanding that Linda would develop a list, and we'd take it and compare it to Sean's list, and then meld them together with the list. That's how we left the meeting.
And when, when would that happen?
Sooner than this.
Well, I, I will state that, well, go ahead, Michael.
I was just going to say, I'm glad none of this is tied to me. I, I am not, not tied to me, I'm, and I am a really good singer, but not even, not even Sandra Hogg can put me in the middle of this one. So I, I would just say that the, the, I guess I got one more. We could ask the finance committee for an unsolicited report.
They were there.
When did the, when did the, you know, the town administrator answer the, ask the question, when did the scope change from 1.21 million?
We definitely never took an unofficial vote, but we definitely had the conversation that if we're going to go there, let's go all the way there. We definitely had the conversation that there would be a stakeholders' meeting, which there was, and, and at some point, we're going to stop looking back and look toward, towards what we actually all want to accomplish. What I would like to accomplish is the stakeholders to come back to this board, which I thought we were going to do, along with our maintenance facility director, and say, what have we missed? So that we can stop nickeling and diming town meeting, and we can just finish this building and be done with it, and move on to another building. So it would be my wish that we could get away from whatever's happened now, give clear direction to the facilities maintenance director and the architect, if we're going to keep said architect. And I think we're down to one. I don't think there's three involved anymore. I think there was two or three different firms.
There were construction firms. The architect remains.
I would like to see one contractor, one estimate, and I, and I appreciate Sean Libby bringing forward ahead of the last capital plan, adding, I think it was 200,000 from what we already had, to get him to where he was comfortable. But when we discussed it, it was not the full list of Linda's wants. It was, it was, it was to get everything done. So I, I hope that we can collectively get a meeting together, get the architect on the same board in the same room, and, and Sean Libby in the same room, and, and everybody collectively get an estimate for town meeting. To Don's point about fall town meeting, we surely could go to town meeting if we have the free cash and if we feel comfortable in the fall and, and work towards that 1.21 million. I'm very uncomfortable, given the, given the other requests and other things that are on the table, and then not knowing free cash, especially knowing that we're paying back the Judah Eldredge property, which we all agreed to do, and the cell tower money. We need concrete numbers to go forward in the fall. So as of right now, I don't see this happening in the fall, and I would hate to go back with 1.2 for Brooks and then come back again. I think we should finish the project. So I hope the stakeholders can get that and, and work with administration, architect, and our facilities maintenance, and just come up with a clear picture, and then move forward at an annual town meeting on it. To Don's point about two-thirds vote, if nobody goes to a meeting three days before Thanksgiving, and the ones that go are the ones that don't want to fund this, then the project dies. So why rush it? Why not aim for success and be done with it? And in the meantime, we have a, and I don't want to speak to the town administrator, he'd have to bring this back, but we have a beautiful concrete building down the street from this. Is there enough space in said building to, to put the exhibitions out and, and to take away temporary things in, in Brooks Academy and, and find a slot for them in 204 Sisson Road? Conversation nobody's happened yet, nobody's had yet, so, but it's certainly worth the discussion and to get on the table.
Thank you. Don?
At the risk of declaring peace in our time, I thoroughly agree with Michael. There, there's so many moving parts to this that in the only two things that matter, and I've said this numerous times at the stakeholder meeting, are how do we get to use the building at least in part next summer, and then how do we finish the building so it's done? We are nickeling and diming, Michael's right about that. We keep doing this, and our credibility, I use that word with the chair, our credibility keeps getting diminished because it looks like, and now you got what you wanted, but now you want more. That is not the truth, and to get, that's why I want to see a melded list so that we absolutely have an understanding that this is really the scope of having the building completed. This is what it looks like to finish it for good, at least for, you know, the next 10 or 20 years, so that everybody's happy, the people, the public who were supporting it is happy, and the building, as I said, remains open this current summer, albeit, that's intriguing possibility, though, Michael, that there's some mechanism for the Historical Society to do something, but that's really up to what they would say about, you know, the 204. That there's some prospect of, of them operating that doesn't involve just locking a building and telling them they can't operate this coming summer, and then the next year, we look at a completed building. That's always been the plan. There's two parts to it, the getting the building open at least partially this summer and finishing it for the next year. I don't see that the fall town meeting gets you any closer to that. I, I agree with Michael. I'm petrified about playing Russian roulette with free cash. I had understood that it was going to be a recertification of the prior year's free cash, but that not being the case, it's impossible to know what you don't know. And we're going to be rolling into May by having pre-spent a couple of million bucks from that. That's really a dangerous play.
Lynn? Thank you for waiting.
No problem. I, being a stakeholder as well, the historic commission, I mean, the museum commission, I was at that meeting, and I received Linda's list, I also received Sean's list, and I did send to both of you that list. So it did get sent. What happened to it from there, I do not know. But I did also want to remind folks that at that meeting, it was brought up that the building did need to be open next summer. So occupancy, what I am hearing tonight about it needing to be redone in January, that is not what the original impression was that was made, that occupancy would go through till next summer with the understanding that as soon as the summer was over, the construction would probably begin, and the occupancy certificate would, of course, stop at that point. Let me just remind you, this is a cherished building of the town. It is on the National Register. We need to get it completed. We need to get it open. It is deteriorating just sitting there with nothing being done to it. This, this is shameful. This is shameful for the town, and it's something that needs to be corrected. Thank you.
Thank you. Don?
Yeah, trying to get a little closer to what Michael was saying, because we need a conclusion for this. I'm not interested in going back anymore about he said, she said. Where we sit right now, we don't have, we obviously didn't have, we're on the same page about what we were looking for, for temporary occupancy. To reiterate, we were looking for that building next summer, first floor only. Secondarily, at least I'll admit this, because you know more about the building trades than I do, you, you didn't want me to combine those two lists. That's a staff function, and I think that this, at this point forward, I, I would ask the town administrator if he could resurrect both of those lists and try to go through them with Sean to see if he's unshackled by the scope of the work from the original capital plan, what he sees in Linda's list that's necessary to occur, so that we can come up with a full picture that Michael was talking about. And I want to see, too. I don't want to nibble at this. So ultimately, let's just move on, let's take Linda's list again, wherever it might be, compare it to what Sean's list was. I think he was tethered to the capital plan request. If, if he were not, and he had whatever he needed to be able to complete the building, which of those items should be included in the, in the work statement to get us done? That would be, that would be the next task.
And I would agree with, I agree with everything that's been set up here. I agree with Lynn, I agree with Linda. When we use the word, what needs to be done, that is a really, like, grossly nonspecific.
Structurally.
Understood, but I'm not sure that everybody feels that that's, everybody's speaking from the same book, so let me.
Yeah, I'd like to see a recommendation in front of us, though. Then we could hold a stakeholders' meeting and have everybody look over the melded list, and is that what we want?
I have to say, and I said it a couple of meetings ago, we got the list. I got the list, I know you've got the list.
But we haven't married it to anything.
Okay, I'll leave it at that. Go ahead, please, sorry.
First off, it's not Linda's list. It is the Historic Society and the Brooks Academy Museum list.
Linda's list sounds so much better.
No, it doesn't. I'm trying to be transparent here. We all came up with this and handed it over, which we did, as our commitment was to have it done within a week, which we met. That would have put it in the middle of July. That would've put it in the middle of July. Our expectation from that meeting, the stakeholders' meeting, was regardless of what was in the capital plan for whatever the description was, is that we were starting from zero. And we were supposed to be coming up with, these are all the items that need to be done, handing it to an architect and saying, can we get some dollars associated with it? Not, I think we're, yes, there's a capital plan, there's a capital plan request, which, again, we didn't have anything to do with. What needs to be done, here's the list. That was our expectation. And how much is that list gonna cost? And what do we think we can get accomplished? So, yeah, yes, there's a capital plan out there that has some stuff on it. But we were gonna go, let's start from ground zero. This is what needs to be done, so it all gets done at once, and be done with this. Another question, Mr. Handler, is, at that meeting, I believe the question came up as to whether or not it would be prudent, rather than use free cash, because the improvements to this building, the renovations that have to be done, are gonna last 40 years. So can we do this by a debt exclusion? And I haven't heard a response to that one either. And I don't know what the answer is or what the druthers of the select board might be. But yet, that's another piece of this. If we need to do, say we need $2 million, an extra $2 million, an extra $3 million, I don't know, some number, does it make more sense on the taxpayers to do this by a debt exclusion so that we pay for it a little bit over the 30 years, or 10 years, or whatever the timeframe is, which will put less of a burden on the taxpayers and keep the free cash? I hate that phrase, "free cash". It sounds like somebody dumped a bag of money out in front of Joe's office. I'm sure he would love, but it would leave that available for some of the other uses of free cash, like an ambulance, like a fire truck, for all of that. So that's another question, that hopefully somebody's taking notes. That that's a question to be answered. Should we be looking at a debt exclusion? But again, I'm listening to this conversation, and I must've been at a different meeting. Because this isn't the stuff I heard, and I have a very good memory. And I took notes.
Thank you. Don?
Luckily, we have a tape, too. I remember it that way myself. I know Peter Hughes, who was there for the Finance Committee, had actually talked in terms of, let's make sure that we get the right scope of work and finish this. So I think we're all on the same page with that. Is it possible to take that list and expense it out to see what that comes to? Or would that require the architect to get involved?
I'm gonna ask which list, the one that Lynn forwarded?
Linda's is bigger, so let's start with that. Let's say it's the society's list. Is it possible to expense that out? I'm not sure whether that's above Sean's pay grade or whether that's the architect that would have to do that. But we really want the right, I mean, the end result needs to be that we get the building and everything that we want it done is done. And as was stated, whether it's a capital improvement that lasts for 20 years or for 40 years, it's still generational. I mean, we're not talking about coming back next year again, and next year again after that, and the CPC saying, didn't you come in already to fix the building over here, but now you're asking to fix the building over there? I think it's reasonable to assume, especially since we're gonna have to, and I think that this is the rationale that you were looking for, we are going to have to go into this town meeting and talk about at least some of this money being, possibly being allocated to taking apart some of the work that was already done recently. And at which point, that becomes a really dicey argument to make at a town meeting. I just assume, pitch it as, we can finish it, we've got the basement done, here's what it's gonna cost to do it. And the only way to know what that is is if somebody takes that list, because it does exceed Sean's in size and scope. I think we could all agree on that.
Joe? I don't have the list in front of me. I'm reluctant to commit to the list.
Understood.
Can someone do it? Yes.
So I hear what you're saying, Pete. Does anyone wanna add to this before I try to wrap this up?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move the question.
We could be here by the town meeting.
I'm surprised it took you so long.
Yeah, you beat me, too.
Yeah, so as I hear it...
I think we should get some information.
As I hear it, the three action items, the summer occupancy, fund it once to completion, and explore debt exclusion to fund it. So based on that, why don't you and I have a conversation tomorrow? And we'll discuss. And then I'll inform the board as to some options, and we can bring it back again and figure out an actual plan on this.
I'll talk with you about it.
Is that good with the board?
Yep.
Michael, you still here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just making sure. Pete, all business. B, I'm gonna give this one to you, Pete, because this was an ask of yours.
Update on field at the community center, Veterans Complex field. That's all I got.
Thank you, Pete. Joe?
If I can go back in time to present moment back in time, is the day after the circus, I met with, I'm trying to use titles, not names, so give me a second. Now I'm making up the title. But our field technician, our field wizard, really, who was there the day after, that's Jared Hopkins. We brought in Sean Fernandez from the golf course, because we knew we were gonna impact upon both the grass that was there and the irrigation system, and met with the rec director. So they gave out the directive that, given the damage that occurred, that was expected to some degree, but certainly exacerbated by the rain that preceded the large trucks moving the equipment out, there were bigger ruts. So they worked on trying to smooth down the ruts immediately. That impacted upon sports programs using that outfield, if you will, because of the ruts. But they reached out to any applicants that were looking to use a portion of the field, such as the Fisherman's Alliance, their annual gala, Cranberry Festival, they did all that. And it did not have a further detrimental effect. After we met, after the circus, at my direction, they reached out to get quotes on what would it take to bring the field back to where we expect it to be? So not maintenance, but recovery, if you will. I believe the latest quote they have is about 12,000 on certain repairs to what we're calling the ruts, and then about 3,000, maybe 3,500 for some irrigation changes. So that's where we're at. I told them to proceed as they determine necessary, because that's their bailiwick, and we need that field to be brought back to the condition that we want. The only outstanding question now is, is the town going to be filing against the circus's insurance coverage that was required? And if we do, are they then gonna go after the Harwich Children's Fund? Regardless, I told my team today, we have to make the repairs. We will be made whole as a town as to where we're at with that. So I believe staff is still working through the insurance question. So we do have the dollar amounts. We do have it back, coming back online. There was impacts on some recreation, but not passive recreation, is what they told me today.
So if I could, please. I wasn't aware that the damage was caused by some of the heavy trucks, I assume during the tent work?
Bringing the tents and the trailers in, not the removal.
Not the removal. And do we have an idea, I know it's somewhere, do we have an idea on the extent of the damage, you know, whether it's square feet or, you know, however it was calculated as far as how much of the field?
I think Jared and Sean do generally what, and when you look at it today, if you saw the tent for the Cranberry Festival, the ruts were on the far end of the tent, which is opposite the community center, the outfield of the senior softball field, and probably running from the foul line to about, say, call it second or shortstop on a line. They have been calculating square footage for repairs.
Okay. And, I don't know what the hell I did with that note. Oh, it's right in front of me. There it is. So, and to your knowledge, it was only the rec program that was impacted. There wasn't any cancellation or relocation of other events?
No, what I'm saying is, Recreation reached out before the event, told some groups that were looking at that field that they may wanna reconsider different locations. After the damage was clear, they moved the senior softball, I think it was their tournament. They moved them there because it would've been too much of a risk liability-wise with the ruts. They reached out to the passive recreation venues, and they opted to stay because it wasn't really in that same area.
Okay, so it's just that one tournament you're aware of?
Correct.
And so back to the process of recouping the loss, the insurance question, as you said. So who's ultimately making that determination?
So I would actually be looking for guidance from the board after I talked to both the carrier for Harwich Children's Fund and the carrier for Circus Mercus or mere staff. I know that representatives from the Harwich Children's Fund, they were invited to be here. I'm not sure if they are here. But I believe they told staff that they're concerned that if we go after Circus Mercus, Circus Mercus is gonna go after the Children's Fund, and that eats into their profit, perhaps. I don't know all that completely. What I do know is the town sought these insurances for just this occasion. When the Rec and Youth Commission and other agencies had approved the project, and by the time it came to me, we were talking about either a wear and tear deposit, a security deposit, if you will, and then it was finally decided by all parties that it would be better to go the insurance route. I have no problem taking actions to make the town whole. I just, I don't wanna do damage to the Children's Fund. None of us do. But the town should be made whole on this project.
Sure, sure. And so with all that in mind, and I appreciate the update, with all that in mind, I assume some folks in town will have a discussion on future events at that location.
So what I told the team today, let's get the field back to where we need it to be. And before anyone starts talking about next year's event, a lot of groups have to have, come together and talk about that. I and other staff members have been scouting out other locations. And it's really if the applicant's agreeable to that, we can make it work somewhere else. But we're gonna have to have that conversation sooner rather than later, in my opinion.
All right. Any thought process on when you'll come back to us with the insurance deliberation?
So I asked the team today to go forward on those expenditures, so we know exactly what the claims would be. So, as you know, we'd need to make the expenditure to then be eligible for the claim response. And that's what I said, we're looking at, it should be under 20,000. We're thinking in the range of, say, maybe 15 on the low end, 18 on the high end. But we'll know that probably within the next two weeks.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Michael?
Yeah, not to compound the conversation, but we made them get insurance for a reason. Like, we didn't do it so that then they could shirk their responsibility in fixing what was damaged. So I know this was a last-minute call, because I know there was concern from the Recreation Committee originally about not wanting to make the decision to allow them to bring those trucks on the field, given the time of year it was. So my point is, if this company goes and tries to hurt the Children's Fund, but we made them put the insurance policy in place, then so be it. We have to follow the process. I mean, we didn't, we didn't just say, and that's a heck of a statement going forward, we're gonna make you pay insurance, but we're not gonna collect. Don't worry about it. So I think we need to just go the process of insurance and see where it lands.
Don? All right, so we'll just wait till you bring back?
Yes, what I'd like to do is, once we have those proof of invoices in hand, because, again, the directive for the team was keep going, because this is exactly the time of year when they wanna be doing this work anyway. I do know there is some concern with the irrigation in the sense that we can spend small dollars, if you will, to repair some of the irrigation heads, but there is a brewing conversation where the irrigation system itself is at its 20-year life. So, you know, I'm looking at repair them in the short term, because that helps with the recovery, to have the irrigation system working. But separate from the circus, there may be a bigger discussion on irrigation, and that may solve the question of where events will be in the future.
Yeah, and quickly, to your point, you know, whether or not the funding, you know, comes to fruition to replace that system, which probably, you know, at some point it will, but in the short term, you need it to correct some of the existing issues. So you're right, we need to do the repair. And if I could just, one more ask. When you talk with staff, if you could shoot the board just a couple of details on the square footage and things of that nature, how many heads we're talking with the irrigation, you know, things like that would be great.
The irrigation, I can tell you, it's 10.
Okay.
Because I heard that today, but we'll follow up on the square footage, everything else.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to contracts and item A. Can I get a motion, Mr. Pikarski?
Motion to approve the 2023 Community Preservation Act agreement with Penrose LLC Orleans Cape Cod 5 Housing Project 100,000.
Second.
Dollars, is that it?
We've been seconded. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, this document that you have here, which was signed by the representative of Penrose, is meant to correct the comments that we were talking about. Specifically, the date is the 16th of September, 2024. So there are no stray marks or anything like that. It's my understanding that this was reviewed by the CPC chair and that everyone agrees that these are the terms that they were asking the board to approve.
Thank you. And it is a grant?
It's correct. It's a grant that the Select Board offers.
Correct.
Based on a town meeting loan for CPC.
There was some language about it, or talked about a loan, but it is a grant, so... Don?
Yeah, and to be even more specific, it's a grant, not a loan. And even though they may be hearing about Penrose being the award winner for the Marsline property, that is not the project. This is the ops building in Orleans that it pertains to.
Thank you. Motion second. Discussion, Michael. Anyone else? All, I'm sorry?
My only comment is, and I guess we, as a board, kinda dropped the ball on this. We did receive a communication, looks like back on May 30th, regarding this, and asking for an updated agreement, and we never followed up, so...
Thanks for bringing that up, Pete.
Some of my critics, well, you know, in fairness, I was critical of them at our last meeting, and, you know, I'll be critical of us. We kind of dropped the ball on that one, so...
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Three, one abstention. And, don't, oh, you don't. Mr. Pikarski, if you'd like to make a motion on item B, please.
I'd be approve a three-year contract with Paul S. Capino and Associates, Inc., TVA PK Valuations Group for the revaluation program and inspectional services of rail and personal property. Total contract now not to exceed $150,000 per fiscal year.
Second. Motion and a second, and I'm gonna start with a question on... Sorry, there's no pages, page numbers on this, Joe, but it says purchase description. Fiscal year 2025 through fiscal year 2027, interim year updates for rail and personal property estimated at a cost of $149,077 per year. It should read, I believe, $50,000 per year, not to exceed $150,000 total. So if I could get, do you see that?
I don't yet, no. So I have the full procurement packet?
I'll tell you what page.
It is the three-year price, and it's page 240.
It's 252, sorry.
So, Mr. Chairman, I don't have a PDF. I have the actual, so I wouldn't have a page number.
Would page 2752?
I'm looking at the document called Contract. Is that what you're looking at?
I'm looking at Harwich Assessor's Office Memo, Revaluation Services RFP Minimum Criteria, Moving Forward Through All the Highly Advantageous, Then to Procurement Checklist and Approval Form. Language is 14977 per year.
Right, per year. Not 50,000 a year.
Not 50,000 a year.
Correct.
Which is what I believe it should read, because it's $150,000 over three years.
Nope.
No, you're wrong.
It's approximately 150 each year.
Per year.
Understood. Thank you, then. So that clears up my confusion?
I'll take it for 50.
Okay, so motion second. Discussion. Anybody else? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Town Administrator's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first one is almost hot off the press. Late this afternoon, I received a report from Tom Caher, who you may know as the administrator of the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority. And what Tom had presented to me late today, that will be distributed to the board and also put in correspondence next week. Is the CCRT... Is the CCRTA Harwich Town Report for fiscal year 2024, so that covers July 1st of '23 through June 30th of 2024? There's some excellent data in here, and so rather than go through it, I will tell you, we're very appreciative of Tom and team at CCRTA. Again, the report will be in your correspondence, and the board will be getting, if you haven't already, from staff, the original email from Tom.
Thank you.
So great to have that data for the last fiscal year. Excuse me.
Excellent.
And then we have some on-call engineering contracts. First executed, an on-call engineering contract for, let me see here, the first one is for stormwater management permits. So VHB, as you know, as they did for the item tonight, anytime we get stormwater permit applications, they act as our town engineer and lieu of the town engineer, and they do the review. So we reviewed that on-call for fiscal year 2025. It's a not to exceed $50,000. For reference, last year, both the on-call for stormwater and the on-call for subdivision review, both came in, they were both $50,000 each max, not to exceed, they both came in a total of $31,400. So there's a contract for on-call engineering for stormwater and on-call engineering for subdivision development review. And even though Steve and his team have been working on the traffic studies, they confirmed the on-call for traffic studies, what they've done is North Harwich will be for $60,000, Harwich Port will be for $60,000. So those should be executed by the end of this week. Again, they've been working on that while we were working on the contract language. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Select Board member. Report. Pete?
The only thing I'll say tonight is that the email that Joe had alluded to earlier that we received regarding Pine Oaks, I sent a follow-up to Joe's correspondent, ask him for additional information, not that I'll have any more sway whatsoever, but just to put it at the top of the email box and hopefully help get a response on those missing items.
Thank you. Don?
Michael? Just an ask of the town administrator last week during the procurement update related to Queen Anne Road, I asked to see your notes. You were going to put them in more official.
Ah, the timelines. I apologize.
If I could get those, I'd appreciate it, and an update by next week on whether or not the procurement's actually gone in.
Thank you, and apologies. I'll send the timeline. Both of the RFPs went out last week, so we did put them on, well, we submitted last week with standard register, or central register, sorry, central register. They're out there this week, so they are underway, but I'll share all of that with you.
Okay. Public, some public are asking where they can find that.
So we put all of our RFPs on our website under RFP. So if they go into the search box and simply type in RFP, it will take them there.
Okay.
They do have to, I believe it's still the case with our new website, they have to input an email address to get the documentation, and that's only because we're supposed to keep a register of anyone that wants it.
Okay.
Secondly, we have references in the Chronicle as to where the information can be found, and it's published on those state websites as well. So all, no, not all three, all, both of the Queen Anne Road properties are out.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I have nothing.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second his motion. So it's fair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 4-0, Joe.